You better get rockin' rollin', guy.
I am.
You're 30 seconds.
That clock is... that city clock.
Okay, watch this. Okay, we're gonna call it to order. Oh, Sheldon.
How's everybody?
Good.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Molly.
President.
Mann.
Present.
Underwood Jacobs.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Chris.
Present.
Mayor, Chairman Perez. We have a quorum.
A move to excuse Mayor Perez.
Second that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. The invocation will be by Pastor David Jackson from Grace Chapel. David, welcome.
Thanks so much. Let's go ahead and pray. God, you're amazingly good, and I just thank you for these men and women that you've gathered here to guide the city. We pray that you would give them wisdom. God, as they discuss using all the resources and time you've given them to govern the city, God, I pray you'd help them do it well, and they would be all for your glory. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Adam, would you like to lead us in the pledge? Come on.
Call me out. Put your right hand on your heart.
Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're gonna have recognition of our outgoing Associate Board members of the Boulevard. Vern, you're gonna help Ken and Angela.
Well, why don't we call you all up, and I know you're all sitting here. Shirley, Adam, Erica. Come on up. We didn't have anybody else sneak in. Sharon, Jeanne, and Amy not here. Okay. Yes, absolutely. We got a photographer here and everything. We got a real photographer here. Okay, let me say a couple words. First, Adam Chan. Adam, you've been a really outstanding member of that board, and I know you have lots of opinions, and we've gotten over the years, and, you know, I really appreciate that. But Lancaster City Council commends Adam Chan for your outstanding contribution of time, talent, and dedicated service to the Boulevard Association Board of Directors, including your role as Vice Chair of the Marketing and Promotions Committee. I know that was a lot of work, so we really appreciate you stepping up. So let's give him a round of applause. And then, the next recipient is Shirley Griffiths. If you don't know, Shirley is the owner of Panache. I've been, like most of the city staff, involved with the downtown for a long time, and the thing we were proudest of is you... your attitude was always, ask not what the city can do for you, do it yourself. And that philosophy... I mean, she's sure... her marketing, which is primarily social, you're one of the best business people we have in the city, and I just couldn't have more respect for you. But let me read what they wrote. Shirley Griffiths, the Lancaster City Council commends Shirley for her... your outstanding contribution of time, talent, and dedicated service to the Boulevard Association Board of Directors, including your role as property business improvement district's first president-elect. We join you in honoring your contribution to vision and mission of the Boulevard, and thanks for making the downtown do all it does.
I love her.
Yes. And then finally, Erica Albee, another person who's really, really held us up for a long time and just supported this a great deal, including a trip down to the Beverly Hilton to pick up a Business Friendly City Award, which we appreciate. You were always there, and let me read what they wrote about you. Lancaster City Council commends Erica Albee for your outstanding contribution of time, talent, and dedicated service to the Boulevard Association, encompassing 10 years on the Board of Directors. So we know that's a lot of time, and I think that deserves a special round of applause. Tim Andrews would be here as the outgoing president, but I guess he's sick. I think we have a lot of people that are sick, just because of the flu that's going around. But we just couldn't be prouder of the downtown. We had kind of the ultimate compliment paid today. We met with a realtor, and there was a piece of property for sale, and there was four or five offers on it already. 10 years ago, don't think that would have happened. But because of the efforts that you've put in, you know, we're really in a great position with the downtown, so thank you so much.
And congratulations to the three of you. We've made a lot of progress throughout the city, but without the three of you helping with the MetroLink, the downtown area, the homeless, it wouldn't have been possible. So you guys are directly responsible for that. So let's give him another hand. Shirley, do you cut Vern's hair?
No, I do not. But he looks nice.
Just checking. Mark, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
CA-1, is that still...
Yes, that's good. Someone else could make the motion, but the mayor did place that on, and you can act upon that.
Okay. Thank you. I need a motion and second for the minutes.
I'm so moved.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Do we get a second?
I got a second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Consent calendar, we need to pull CC-11.
So I need a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar as currently comprised, pulling CC-11.
I'll make a motion to... For the consent calendar as comprised without CC-11.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Motion passes 4-0. Michael, CC-11.
Vice Mayor Chris, Council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. I noticed just in the paper this week, it said, "Don't sweep fallen leaves into streets." And that's for the homeowners, but we have a real problem in this town with the gardeners. The gardeners are throwing stuff in the street. I saw two instances this week, once on 10th Street West and once in my own neighborhood today. I couldn't believe it. I mean, I'm out there every day with a dustpan and a broom. Now, these guys that do these yards, they make good money. They can pick up the leaves and every debris. They do not have to blow it on the street. And that's gonna clog up the drains. We're gonna have a big problem when it starts raining. So I would hope that the city... they don't have an ordinance. You guys pass a ordinance that these guys cannot throw the debris out in the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 15-68.
I'll second.
I need a motion for CC-11. Is that it?
That is it.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Motion passes 4-0. PH-1. Brian?
Would be appropriate to open the public hearing.
Okay, we're gonna open a public hearing.
And hear the staff report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chris, and members of the City Council. The item that's before you is an appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of a one-year extension to a tentative tract map that is located at the northwest corner of 40th Street West and Avenue K. This map was originally approved by the city in October of 2006. At the time that the map was approved, the entire 40-acre site was designated as urban residential and zoned for single-family residential at R-7,000. Once this map was approved, it became subject to a number of automatic extensions that were granted by the state of California. And as you may recall, this was in response to the recession that began approximately 2008. Those totaled seven overall years, and it took this project all the way from an original expiration date of 2008 to 2015. But during the time that those extensions were being granted, the city was going through the process of revising its general plan and ultimately its zoning plan for the city. This particular site was re-designated so that 10 acres at the very corner of the intersection of 40th Street West and Avenue K was changed to commercial. This happened in 2009, and then in 2010, the city rezoned the site in accordance with that general plan revision. In 2015, in October, the Planning Commission really had the first opportunity to look at this map since those changes had occurred. One of the things that we looked at, both as a staff in making our recommendation and the Planning Commission in considering it, were the requirements that are in the city's subdivision ordinance for granting an extension to a map. And those findings really assume that you can grant an extension when there have really been no changes to the land use designation or the circumstances under which the map was approved, and that map design remains valid. With the change on the corner, obviously, that situation does not exist. And based on those findings contained in the subdivision ordinance, staff recommended denial to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission, in their review of the information and in their deliberation, concurred with that recommendation and voted to deny the map. The applicant has subsequently appealed that to you. It is in front of you now. From a staff standpoint, this is a pretty basic matter of what does the subdivision ordinance require us to act as or act on, and what factors do we need to consider. We feel that it's pretty clear that a map that requires extensive revision is not an appropriate candidate for an extension, and it ought to be refiled as a new map and go through the typical review process. We are therefore recommending that you uphold the Planning Commission's determination in accordance with the findings that they made at that time in October and deny the extension of the map. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and of course, Chairman Vos is here to respond to any issues that you may have in regards to the Planning Commission's consideration.
Yeah, I have a question, Brian. So, given we go back to 2006, without the drop-off of the economy, do you think that probably it would have been the intent of the individual that holds the map to have developed it as it was zoned at that particular time?
Well, given the... and I can't obviously look into their mind, but yes, given the economic situation at the time in 2006, I believe that they were pretty certain that they were going to be able to proceed with the map in a timely manner. They are a firm company that has done that on numerous other sites in the city. They're certainly not novices at this approach. So I think that they had a reasonable expectation that they could move forward.
Okay. Because obviously, my extensive experience with the Planning Commission, the frustrating part is, you know, when we have two of those awards hanging on the wall, it's unfortunate that the economy went the direction it did, you know, 2000... late 2006, starting in 2007. And it's just now we're on that tipping point of things starting to come back. And it's frustrating for me. I mean, I understand that not being actively involved and paying attention to the zone changes. It's frustrating for me as a city council member to send the wrong impression to people that have come in Lancaster and done business historically. I just find it very difficult. I'm just sharing that with you. I don't know what my colleagues would say, but I do know that historically, you know, I'm a firm believer, you know, when people own the land, it's very frustrating to hear stories about government today, either changing the designated use or taking it through eminent domain. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Any other questions?
Yes. As I read the appeal form from the owner of the land, I saw that they had wanted a request for a 60-day continuous, and I'm wondering, is that not amenable? Or if we're going to do an extension, does it have to be a year or more?
There's some discretion on the part of the city as to what they want to do. We simply state in our subdivision ordinance that you can't grant more than one year at a time, and that the total extensions that the city grants can't total more than three years total. So we have had a number of occasions where we've looked at maps where there wasn't a land use change or a designation change in the zoning, and we have granted 60-day continuances or even in some cases, extensions of 60 days to allow them time to do the revisions. The issue, as I said here, falls more on the issue of how extensive is the revision, and does that fall under the intent of what the subdivision ordinance really calls for in granting a map extension? But yes, there's a lot of flexibility in terms of how long you can grant an extension for and how many times.
And just from my understanding, then, for... it's now rezoned as commercial?
A portion of the site is, yes.
A portion. How much of a portion of the site?
10 acres.
10 acres. Thank you.
Any other questions? That's good, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Reeves.
Vice Mayor Chris, Council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I don't know if you read the newspaper, but I read the newspaper, and I read the legal notices in the back of the newspaper. And every day, I see anywhere between two and four foreclosures in zip code 93636. You know, we have a major problem in our city. We're losing good people. They're walking away from their homes. I hope that the council will consider, you know, not granting any extensions or anything or allowing any more housing to be built in this city until we come up with a solution to why these people in 93636 are walking away from their homes. You know, we're talking a lot of outstanding people with beautiful homes are just walking away. You know, what's going on? No more building, as far as I'm concerned, until we get to the bottom of this and find out what's going on in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Is the applicant here, Mr. Jim Powers?
Vice Mayor Chris, members of the City Council.
Jim, I just have a couple questions for you.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
You're aware that there is an extensive revisions that have to be done?
Yes, we are.
And you're aware this might cost you more in the long run doing it this way than doing it from scratch?
Yes.
And you're amenable to working this out as soon as possible?
Yes, we are.
Okay. That's all I have. Any questions for the applicant?
I don't have any.
Okay. I need a motion and a second.
Need to close the public hearing?
Yeah.
Public hearing's now closed.
Thank you.
So it's been a while since I've done a reverse designation, so rather than adopt the resolution, upholding the Planning Commission, I would want to deny if I attach to that a one-year extension?
So I think the motion you're looking for is to grant the appeal with a one-year extension?
Okay.
Is that the motion you're...
That's the correct wording.
Am I...
Okay.
I think that's what you were trying to say, and...
Right.
Okay. So that would be the motion you were looking at.
I was just reading from the recommendation, so...
Right.
I would move that we adopt Resolution 1569 and grant the one-year extension?
No, you don't want to adopt Resolution 1569.
So that's why I said that we...
You just want to... no, you want to just simply move to grant the appeal...
Okay.
...with a one-year extension.
Thank you.
You do not want the resolution. That resolution is not what you want.
Yeah. Historically, when we were on the Planning Commission, sometimes we would reverse the legalese in relationship to the wording that was written on here. So I will make a motion to grant the one-year extension.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes 4-0. Mr. Vos, thank you for what the Planning Commission does. I know that your hands were kind of tied on this one, and... but we want to extend the thanks to the Planning Commission for what they do, and we appreciate our Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Okay. PH-2. We're gonna open the public hearing. Who's doing the...
Staff report.
Staff report?
Barbara is.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Chris, members of council and commission. The item that is before you at this time is to adopt two resolutions. One is a resolution that would rescind the current rate schedule for Lancaster Choice Energy generation rates and creates a new rate schedule with lower rates. The second item is a resolution that amends the city's master fee schedule and amends several of the fees on that schedule. I'm gonna take a moment just to update you on where we are with Lancaster Choice Energy. As you're aware, we started with Phase 1 in May, which was just the city municipal accounts and a handful of customers who opted in early. In October was our citywide launch. We currently have approximately 52,000 customers, and we have two product offerings, a 35% renewable, which is our base product, and a 100% renewable Smart Choice product that we have over 400 customers that have opted up to the Smart Choice product. Goals for our... for the program are to have rates that are competitive with Southern California Edison, and to have a higher rate of participation. When we started the program, we assumed an 80% participation rate, meaning that we assumed that about 20% of the eligible customers would opt out. We have been very pleased that our participation rate is actually closer to 95%. So we've had a much lower-than-anticipated opt-out, which is good. That means more customers. In terms of our rate, we set our rates to be competitive with Southern California Edison. We initially set our rates in February. At that time, the rates were 3% lower than Southern California's effective rates. Since that time, Edison has had several different rate changes, and we anticipate that their rates will again change in January of 2016, although we don't know exactly what those rates will be. We believe that they will have a... will result in a decrease in 2016. What we have proposed to council is an average decrease to our customers of approximately 20%. We can offer lower rates because of two things. One is the higher-than-anticipated participation rate, so we have a larger customer base than we anticipated. We are also seeing a lower cost of power than what we had originally assumed in our financial projections. The market is just very favorable right now in terms of what it costs us to buy the power and then resell it to our customers. The rates that are proposed include a 20... what we're calling a 2016 market demand credit. We're recommending a credit on customers' bill for just one year. Because we're in a favorable position, we want to pass along some savings to the customers that are just temporary, so it's a one-year credit. And we also want to ensure that while Edison's rates may be volatile through the year, that our rates remain competitive with Southern California Edison. The combination of the base rate and the credit would result in a 3% savings as compared to what we project Southern California Edison's rates to be. Since we aren't currently aware of what exactly the rates are going to be, we can't say exactly, but we're fairly confident that the combined rate will result in a good savings for our customers. In addition, we're recommending adding three new rates to our rate schedule that are not currently offered. One is a time-of-use rate for residential, which right now, residents... doesn't matter what time of day they use their power, they pay a one-set rate. This would allow a discount. If you're a higher user at night, you would be paying a lower rate. That would be a rate that would be... a customer would elect to participate in. We would also recommend adding time-of-use electric vehicle and a time-of-use super-off-peak for pumping and agriculture uses. Right now, we do have customers who might otherwise participate but don't because we don't offer that rate schedule, so we would recommend adding that to our customers. In terms of goals for our program for the coming year, we are planning a Smart Choice marketing campaign to increase enrollment in our 100% renewable Smart Choice product. We are in the process of working on developing an economic development incentive program that we would use to help with our packages to attract businesses to Lancaster. We're working on energy efficiency programs, and also will continue to support our local solar development and procure local solar power. In terms of the adjustment to the citywide fee schedule, we are recommending changes to the rental charges for city facilities. These changes are recommended to reflect current market conditions as we see them. We also are requesting a fee schedule for Zelda's, the recently opened facility at Lancaster Performing Arts Center. We want the ability to rent that out and need to adopt a fee schedule related to that. If adopted, all of these fees would become effective on January the 1st, 2016. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions that you may have. We also have our consultants from Pacific Energy Advisors. They work with us on several different aspects, including our power procurement and rate-setting and our pro forma.
Barbara, when do you expect, obviously, if we pass this tonight, when do you expect us coming back and reviewing the rates again? Is that gonna be semi-annual, annual?
So when you adopted the rates in February, what we had anticipated is that the rates would be reviewed annually with the budget. With the current conditions in terms of the cost of power, we thought it prudent to actually come to you sooner rather than waiting for the budget to give our customers the benefit of the lower rates sooner rather than later. So I wouldn't anticipate coming back to you again until 2017.
Okay.
With the budget.
And where does that put us at against Southern California Edison? So that we're obviously offering a much more competitive rate than... you know, I wouldn't want to see us get beat out by SCE.
Yeah, I understand. So what we tried to do is take into account all of the factors that may impact Southern California rates for 2016, and from that then develop the proposed rate schedule, so we would continue to be competitive with them even with their changes that we might see through the year. You might recall that when we came with the proposal for this program, one of the goals was to be offer rate stability to our customers and not have fluctuating rates. And so in bringing... developing our rates and bringing to you this proposal, we're confident that through the year we would be competitive and not feel the need to either come back and adjust or find ourselves where we're no longer competitive with Southern California Edison. or find ourselves where we're no longer competitive with Southern California Edison.
Okay. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I didn't catch... What was the percentage of opt-out?
We're currently at 5% opt-out, and we had assumed a 20%.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it. Barbara, explain to me the 15% penalty that Southern California Edison charges on top of our rates.
I like how you call it a penalty.
That's what I call it too, is a penalty.
Is it not a penalty?
Um, well, it's not on the bill listed as a penalty.
Okay. Let me ask it this way. Are our rates 18% cheaper than Edison's?
Yeah, yes. Our rates are actually...
Okay. So with the 18% rate that's cheaper than Edison, they charge an additional 15% as a penalty for them leaving Edison?
Right. Our customers are charged a surcharge to compensate Southern California Edison for power that has been procured on their behalf. I will say that for 2016, actually that surcharge will be close to zero because Edison has some one-time refunds that will be flowing through, and our regulatory staff, Kathy, and our attorneys worked very hard at the PUC level to ensure that our customers receive the benefit of those refunds that will be flowing to their customers, because our customers were Southern California Edison customers at the time that events took place that resulted in these refunds. So actually for next year, that surcharge will be close to zero, but it would again come back up again in 2017.
So help me understand. So I understand the credits that's going to be passed on to the customers so that they won't have that so much of a gap. So what period of time does that surcharge goes away? Because obviously SCE went out on the open market, as we did, and bought power on behalf of everybody here in Lancaster. Now that we've been able to be convincing by offering a cheaper product, we get to enjoy that 95% transfer over to Lancaster Choice Energy. At what point would that gap of that surcharge go away? At the close of their contract that they signed for the... I mean, how long is that contract?
So as I understand it, it's... PCIA is the official term, Power Charge Indifference Adjustment. That is technically generally effective for about 20 years.
Oh, really?
And would then phase out. It changes annually. However, through what has been seen in Pacific PG&E territory, they have been resetting that for customers depending on if they move in and out, different events that take place. They've been resetting what's called a vintage, which is what year does it... What's their starting point for the 20 years to start? Southern California Edison at this point in time has said that they don't enter... Are not going to apply that surcharge in the same manner and that our customers wouldn't have that same effect. And to this point, all of our customers are currently considered 2014, which means generally over the course of 20 years, that would go away. That's yet to be seen.
Okay.
So we're working hard on the PUC level to impact and ensure that what the intention was of that surcharge, that it would actually diminish and go away.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Does that 15% fee also encompass their infrastructure charges? Because their bill just went up an extra $10.50 or so.
Yeah. I think what you're referring to is the minimum charge. They increased it to $10 a month, minimum charge. So there are two components to each customer's bill, Southern California Edison's side, which is for the transmission and delivery charge, and then the generation charge. The surcharge is on Southern California Edison's portion of the bill, so it's in addition to that transmission and delivery charge that you're referring to.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael.
Vice Mayor Crist, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. You know, I'm all for giving people rebates and refunds, et cetera, but tonight I have earthquake on the brain, and I'll be mentioning it the next two times I get up. You know, I wish the city would consider taking some of the monies that we save on electricity instead of giving it all to the consumer, which is nice. They use part of that money to purchase earthquake insurance for every homeowner in Lancaster. And you could have Assemblyman Lackey and State Senator Runner work with the state government to see if they could come up with a law that would allow a municipal city to purchase earthquake insurance for the people and use the funds from this energy project, some of them, to purchase the earthquake insurance. Because this is innovative. It's great. You're using renewable energy. Why don't we be innovative and prepare for the next earthquake? Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Any discussion? I need a motion in a second to adopt the resolutions.
I motion that we adopt Resolution Number 1570 and adopt Resolution Number 1571.
Let's vote.
Second that.
Let's vote.
It's not ready yet. Okay, there you go.
Motion passes 4-0. Both of them. CA 1, the consideration of reappointment of Marvin Crist, Rob Paris to the Antelope Valley Fairgrounds Joint Powers Authority Board. I'll make that motion.
Do we have any speaker cards?
None.
Okay. Well, I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, there you go. There's a big motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second. Let's vote. Motion passes 4-0. CR 1. Michael.
Vice Mayor, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. The Vice Mayor and Councilwoman were at the AVTA Board, and you remember that I recommended that we paint numbers on the bus shelters that are all over the city in case of an earthquake. You could tell certain citizens to go to certain bus shelters, and they would be picked up by AVTA and taken to a football field or a college field to stay. And I want to once again commend the Councilwoman for pushing to get the shelters all over town, and thank you very much on behalf of the bus riders of Lancaster, because I can see people protected from the cold and the wind from those shelters. Also, at the AVTA meeting, there was a discussion to have an all-electric bus company, which is nice, but I don't like to put all our eggs in one basket. And I mentioned that, you know, maybe in an earthquake, again, I'm bringing up earthquake, you know, we're not able to charge up some of those buses. So I don't think that we should give up all the diesel buses. We need to have some diesel buses out there just in case we're not able to charge the electric buses. I lived in Los Angeles when they converted over from electric streetcars and trains to buses. They did the opposite, which was a disaster, contributed to the smog, and then 50 years later, they put the electric cars back. So let's not be like Los Angeles was in the early '60s. Let's diversify a little bit and have a few diesel buses in case of an earthquake. Thank you.
Angela, you want to give the report?
Sure. I found that what we're doing at AVTA is to be very commendable, not only commendable, but showing a vision and being innovative by wanting to be the fully electric fleet by the end of the fiscal year 2018, which means that they will be 100% green. So I think it was a very honorable feat to take on a task, to set for them.
Not only that, but we're eligible for more grants. While we make that commitment, we were eligible for a total of $34 million from the state of California because we made a commitment earlier to go part-green in the commitment of our electric buses. But, Michael, to answer some of your questions in regards to that, a diesel bus costs about $1.60 a mile to run. An electric bus costs 35 cents a mile to run. So we'll be... Have far more money to operate the system. The system will expand, will have more money to do things with, hopefully, as long as we keep getting funded on our current level. But as far as your earthquake to buy from the Lancaster Choice Energy homeowners insurance, the earthquake insurance for that, if you take the 67,000 homes that we have in the Antelope Valley and buy earthquake insurance, it's about $100 million. So we don't make that much money on the energy. So I'd rather give it back to the citizens. So council reports. Mr. Man?
Yes, we had our monthly meeting for the County Sanitation District Number 14, and a little over a month ago, I had stated in a previous council meeting that we had to do a emergency repair to the storage reservoirs out there that were built. And when we had those severe rains, we needed to do some emergency repairs that totaled about $300,000. I've got a product here. I thought it would be very interesting, so maybe we ought to let the city look at it as well as maybe we ought to take it to the air quality district. This is a core sample of after the ponds were treated, we did the sides and the top. If you'll take a look at this, this is actually dirt that's been treated with a chemical. That's why we got it in the bag for you, Marvin.
It might be called dirt now.
But I want... I think there's some value to it that we can possibly use both in... Potentially, maybe in the solar fields. There's a whole lot of... That's pretty impressive. That's almost like cement. And the expected life is 10 years. Tell me if that's not like concrete. Maybe if they'd used that the first time around, we wouldn't be doing $300,000 with emergency repairs. Pretty interesting, huh? That was just a topical, chemical, applied to the soil, compacted and then applied. Just like cement. So other than paying that bill to repair those and then setting our annual policy on reinvestment of dollars that are in the sanitation district, I have nothing else to report.
Okay. Any other reports? City Manager.
Thank you. I have a couple. Speaking of dirt, after the cleanup of the storm on October 15th, we find ourselves with a lot of dirt. What people probably don't realize is that the fire department gives out sandbags to anyone that comes free of charge to the fire stations, but as anyone who's filled up a sandbag knows, the dirt is the hard part and the heavy part in moving it. Mayor Paris had asked that we look at ways to make it more accessible to the public, and what we're going to be doing is in past years, we have people come to the maintenance yard, is the only location in Lancaster, to get some dirt and sandbags. Now we're going to have six separate locations. We'll be putting out a press release, two on the west side, two on the east side, and two on central Lancaster. And I think we have a map, Luke, if he can get the map on the projector, but that will be in our press release. So I think it'll make it more convenient for people. They can pick up, I think, the limit, if I'm not mistaken, Gerald, is 25 per fire station you can pick up, and then you can go to any of these six locations free of charge and fill the bags up with dirt and transport them to your location, and there's the map. Second announcement, this Saturday is our Magical Boulevard Christmas event. It ends the 100 Days of Fun for the Parks Department and the... Oh, not quite. The Pancake Breakfast ends the 100 Days of Fun. This ends the last on the Boulevard. So we hope people go out and have a good time this Saturday. It looks like we've dodged the weather gods. It's going to be between storms, which will be good. And then we always like to end with a couple of videos, and it's not to pat the council and staff on the back for events and stuff, although that's warranted. It's really to show, and I hope people realize how much it's... How important it is for the community to get together and to celebrate in community events and community gatherings, and it helps with... It just helps with the general mood and it helps with how you feel about your community, which improves everything. So the first one we have is the Field of Drafts video. It's the inaugural voyage of our drone that we bought. And then the second one is the video on Small Business Saturday. I'd like you to pay attention particularly to the last woman who speaks. I think she really hits the nail on the head. So the first one is Field of Drafts.
We're here at the Third Annual Field of Drafts Craft Beer Festival, where people from all over have come to enjoy more than 80 different types of beer here at the hangar.
It's another great event for the Antelope Valley and how it affects the Antelope Valley, especially Lancaster. Everyone seems to love it. Our VIP section sold out. It's very, very successful. We hope to look at about 4,000 to 5,000 people here today. We don't have to take our money, our tax dollars, and move them to LA. We now have events here in the Antelope Valley, specifically Lancaster, that help bring the entire community together.
Definitely, they need to come out and try this out because this is experience, and this is amazing to be just a part of it. Owning a restaurant, I ran into a few of my customers, and they're like, hey, after the beer, we're going to go to your restaurant. So economically, it's great and all around.
This is fantastic. We've got 45 brewers there today. I was at the gate helping put on wristbands, taking tickets, and we had people telling us where they came from. So I already had people tell me, oh, we came from San Francisco. So when we talk about local economy, I'm sure this brought in a boatload of people for the weekend.
It's just a great day to be out here, enjoy some great music, some great food, and of course, great beers. So we've got our local brewers that are here and then a great selection of guys from all over the country.
This is one of those events that people talk about during the year. This is one of those events that people are ready to buy those tickets. I think the VIP sold out in about 10 or 12 hours. But when you're looking at a community and you're saying, hey, this is what happens in this month and this month, this is one of those events that people look forward to.
This is the third event. Really, really excited about being a sponsor of the glasses again. Petrollok is looking forward to next year already. Get out here and you get to meet with customers and people that you deal with on a regular basis. I mean, like just now, I just met with Gus Camacho. He and I went to high school together, been friends for 25 years. It's amazing how much extra business we've been able to generate just from events like this.
The city is amazing. The city programs that they're doing, Boulevard, and I'm looking forward to Christmas coming up for Magical Christmas, but the stuff they do is amazing.
It's easy. It's always very easy working in cities. They're always fantastic. Easy to work with, pleasure to work with, and they always put on a fantastic event. We help in securing some brewers to come out here, getting breweries to come from LA with that camaraderie and fellowship that we have with the LA Brewers.
It's great to get our name out there and have people come and try the beer, you know, free samples, so there's no commitment. Yeah, it's just, it's awesome to meet people, talk about the beer firsthand, and just get that immediate feedback from them, too.
We have twice as many people here this year as we had last year. And last year, we considered a raging success, but look at this. It's a thing of beauty, all of these beer lovers out here. You make a good product, you make a good beer, and they will come. That's just the way it works, you know?
While he's queuing up the second one, Gerald and I successfully spent five hours staying off-camera, so we were very proud of ourselves.
We have a few shots, though.
We're here on the Boulevard celebrating Shop Small Saturday, an event recognized by cities around the country in support of their local businesses. American Express is a great champion of this effort. They consider us a community champion, so they sent us a lot of great stuff. They sent us the canvas bags that we're giving away, a lot of the signage. And then we really looked around at the business owners and said, hey, what do you guys want to do? How do you want to express your business? So our totes that we're giving away are stuffed with everything from a tasting menu to discounts, coupons, you get a free cupcake. I know Black Friday's a lot of fun for a lot of people to get those deals. But when you realize you have something like this, you do, you actually get to meet those neighbors, you get to meet the business owners, you get to see all like the cool little unique shops that are around. And you get to kind of talk to other people that you're out, you know, out and about and shopping with. Anyone that comes to our event can enter, get one free raffle ticket. And you can win a gift certificate to any of, I believe we have 56 businesses involved in it. And all you have to do is just drop your ticket in there, and we'll do the drawing starting at 1:30. How do you think the turnout is going so far for Shop Small Saturday?
You know, this is our second year, and I think the turnout is better than last year. We've got, we've got live music today. We've got a lot more business participation. It's a much more pretty day than it was last year.
What about some of the, the social aspects of shopping small?
Well, you know, the more people that are down here on the Boulevard or in any, any small environment, the more people, the more energy there is, the more interaction, the more, the more fun it is to be around. The more people that are on this Boulevard on any given night make it a much more pleasant environment to be in. Black Friday's turning into a whole weekend, and the American Express people and Shop Small, the way it's promoted, it just capitalizes on that, that shopping energy. This is a shopping weekend.
I think it's a good idea. I think that when you live in a town, even if you've lived here for a while, you may not know everything that's in town. You get to know your neighbors, and you get to feel like you're a part of the community because when you hit a mall, it's just a building. When you go to these shops, it's somebody's dreams. And I think that's an interesting idea.
I want to point out that while Raj and Ken and myself were at the beer festival, Angela was representing us at the fallen heroes. So thank you for that. City clerk.
This is the time to address the city council, agency, and authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Michael Reeves.
Vice Mayor Chris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I don't know if you got this in the mail today, but I did. It's from Assemblyman Tom Lackey. And it talks about floods, and it lists some numbers you could call for help, and you can tear it out and save it. And I thought, well, you know, maybe the city of Lancaster could put something like this in their, their magazine. And the thing about Assemblyman Lackey's numbers are, they're, they're broad numbers. They're like, you know, some numbers in Sacramento. The numbers ought to be local. People that you can call local, or agencies you can call local for flood advice or earthquake advice. So it's something to think about in the future so that we can be prepared for the big one when it comes. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Merry Christmas. Liz Orchard.
Hello, members of the council. My issue that I wanted to bring up was rent control. $120 increase a month in rent for a year lease, to me, is quite high. And I know there's some other areas, I think, believe in LA, they have rent control. And I was just, would like to address that something be done about the rising rent in this area. My pay is not going up that much a year to compensate for $1,200 increase in rent. It's just a huge increase, and there is no, seems to be no stop. I mean, I'm dreading next year because what's that going to be? And you have to take from somewhere to pay, you've got to live somewhere. And that, to me, is just an horrible increase a month, $120 increase.
Where do you live?
I live in the town.
Area?
In the area, 20th Street and Lancaster, very close to, to here, down the street practically from the center.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wally.
Good evening, city council staff, Vice Mayor Chris. I want to bring up again a subject that I've, that I've, that I've talked about before, and that is duplexes. It seems to me that in this town, we don't have a price range of housing for different levels of income of people. And the price range that I'm, that I'm speaking about is about from $650 to about $1,200. And I'm referring specifically to some duplexes that California City has, which are state-of-the-art, that, that are just $650. And when you get to Lancaster, which is not very far from California City, which is also in the Antelope Valley, you don't hide, you don't find any duplexes. And, and, and this price range that I'm talking about, that, that, that I just said, starts from $650 up to $1,200, which is an oversized house. You, you, we don't have the in-between price ranges. For example, $750 a month, $850 a month, $900 a month, which is a lot of difference. If you pay $1,200 a month of rent, and then your, your, your income level hardly covers that, then at the end of the month, you're broke. But if you, but if you, but if you have a, if you have like, for example, like a duplex, which I'm talking about, and you pay, let's say, $850 or $900, that's $300 extra that you have a month. And, and I'm, and I'm saying this, and I want the attention of the planning commission to be more active in promoting duplexes. And for, for builders, for developers, there's a profit in building duplexes. Because just think about it. If you build a large oversized house, and let's say that nobody wants to buy it anymore, like they will say, people are moving out, so they, they have to rent it. So there's always people moving here and there. And so, so they try to find, and their income level is, is only so much, and then they got to, and they can't find anything less than $1,200. So I'm saying this for the planning commission to be more active in promoting duplexes, state-of-the-art, which are very nice with an attached garage and a Washington Bar hookup inside and so on. So that's, that's what I want to bring up.
Thank you, Wally.
Thank you, Chris.
Maria. Maria, you put in two cards earlier.
Yeah.
For CC8 and CC4. When you put the cards in, we'd already done that.
Right, okay. All right, well, actually, it, as I said, it's non-agendized, but I actually wanted to speak on that, especially after seeing the video and stuff, showing how, you know, businesses, as far as businesses go, everybody's all, you know, acting like it's all happy and you're, everybody's having such a great time at some of these events and stuff, which I don't see at all. I don't see, when people speak about what we're, when you get together with people to talk about issues, it usually relates to being sick, having their, their, their things stolen thefts, I mean, all kinds of criminal activity. I mean, this is what people are talking about, that they're having all kinds of problems like this. So as far as the business license goes, I have a problem with public. It says on there that it's for the health, safety, and welfare, which anymore, business is all about, you know, a medical, which is the health. There's so many businesses in this town. If you drive around, they're all medical offices everywhere. That's all we have. And as far as the safety goes with law enforcement, I don't feel safe. I don't feel safe in this town, and I know a lot of people that don't. You know, the appearance of everything's fine. Our crime rate has skyrocketed. You know, people are continually being robbed and under intimidation, you know, threats that if you don't do a certain thing, then, you know, we're going to take your things, we're going to send you to jail. These are the real issues and things that are really happening, that are going on, but you don't see them or you don't, because people that it's really happening to can't talk about it. And also, as far as social services, that's another thing. People that have lost their homes or lost their jobs, they're giving these services like, oh, like, that's such a great thing, you know? You have to sign up to be, you know, on your mental health or something to be able to get any money, or you have to sign up, you know, for certain things, which makes you a client of the social services departments, which means, you know, if you're incapacitated, they can take anything that they want of yours. But I have a serious problem with the, the crime and who's actually doing the crime and who is being put on for the crime. It seems to be always switched around when something happens, that the people that are really perpetuating the crimes aren't the people that are in trouble, but the people that are doing what they're supposed to be doing in order so that they can't speak out or say anything or, you know, have any means to, you know, go to court, get any of their things back because it's always stopped or it's always, you know, in some way through some other business or whatever that you don't even know is a business or whatever, you know, used with it, like youth programs, you know? It's another business, using kids for things. As far as, what were some of the things in their transportation? Oh, God, I could really go on, and I would really like to. I would really like to talk a lot more about what's really going on. And if something needs to be done, we all know that all these problems are going on, but nobody does anything about the people that are really causing the problems. They just keep getting to do it. And the people that aren't doing it are the people that are having the problem, the real problems and being in trouble. We all know that we've been going through a lot of problems, and it just keeps escalating. And when's it going to stop? The same thing that I was wanting to speak on with the, the energy and all that.
Thank you, Maria. Appreciate it. David.
Please give us an uplifting speech, David.
Nothing but Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor and council, good evening. Yeah, I, I love this town, and I see what goes on. And I mainly rose tonight to just say thank you to everyone in the city that's extended their kindness and their friendship to me. I go to almost all of the events. I talk to a lot of people, and a lot of people are excited about the changes that have come to this city. They're proud to live here, and I count myself as one of them. The energy that the council puts in, the effort that the city staff puts in, I have never seen a community like this. Our sheriff department does an excellent job, our fire department. You know, this is a town where people feel connected, and I feel that connection, and I just want to express my gratitude and thanks. Merry Christmas to you all. This is a wonderful city to live in. Thank you.
Thank you, David. That was good. David, you want another three minutes? Council comments. Raj?
Yes, I would like to actually share with, last Saturday, I had an opportunity, actually, Angela and I were both, we had the opportunity to be a part of the Christmas parade. And both of us brought our family, and it was amazing. Like David said, you know, it's just feel so proud to be a part of this community. It was just, everybody was out there, and just being there, Christmas parade, it was amazing. And I wanted to thank you Dodge Hunters for providing such a wonderful vehicles to, so we could sit on them. And thank you. But I just wanted to share with everybody, it is such an amazing event we had. And thank you for Chamber of Commerce for providing everything this event. And one more thing I wanted to share. A couple of weeks ago, I asked Vice Mayor that I would like to, whenever you go pick up those bikes, 500 bikes, you, I like to be a part of it. So last week, I got a call, hey, are you ready tomorrow? So I, I'm like, yeah, for sure. So next day, 10 o'clock, we had over to pretty much all the Walmarts picking up. And I thought it was going to be probably a couple of our things. So we'll be done in like two, three hours. We started around like at 9:30, 10, and we didn't finish like 6:30, 7:00 PM. And I, I don't know how you do it, and I just wanted to, he doesn't like to take enough credit. I just wanted to, please give him a hand, a hand of applause, you know, because he really deserves that. He doesn't like to. He, he really a true member, leadership, we needed something like that, and I just wanted to thank you personally. I had a wonderful day. It was a long day, but it was good. Thank you.
Thank you, Raj. Angela?
You know, I was just thinking, sitting here thinking about all these things tonight, and the, the one thing that came to my mind is, I love this city. I really do. And I love what we represent and what we're trying to accomplish together. So to all of you here tonight and those of you who are at home watching, thank you so very much for all that you do to make us who we are. I can't imagine where we're going to be even a year from now, just thinking all the innovative ideas that are going on with AVTA, Choice Energy, so many different things. So thank you from the bottom of my heart and my family. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Ken?
Yeah, I think this is a great time for us to give thanks for what we've received this year. And, you know, too often, we, we don't stop and take time and counter blessings. And I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. And I know this, this is our last meeting of the year, if I'm correct. And we may not come together again, but Merry Christmas.
Sheldon?
I'd just like to thank the staff for the work that you put in and, and the incredible things that, that all of you do to make our city function. It is, it is beyond comparison to, and I was born and raised in DC, so I know, I know dysfunction when I see it. You, you all are, are far and away not that. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for what you do.
Thank you, Sheldon. And you're having a criminal justice meeting tomorrow.
There's a criminal justice commission, uh, meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock.
Mr. Voss?
Thank you. Sheldon, you, I think you stole almost everything I was going to say, except the DC remark. I've visited there, but I've never lived there. You are correct, and, and we do have a wonderful community and a wonderful city staff, a great city council. And if I can put in a plug for our planning commission, a great group of folks who really care about what they do. We, we do miss Councilman Wally.
We have him now.
Former commissioner, Wally, that is.
You trained him well.
Thank you. You know, we were very fortunate to have him with us from the beginning. And matter of fact, he served on the general plan oversight group prior to the city planning commission appointment. So Raj's been involved with our community and its growth from the beginning. So we're just very grateful. And personally, I would like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a safe, very safe and prosperous New Year.
Thank you. Couple things. Let's start with homeless. We were notified yesterday that the civil grand jury will be in town Thursday at 9:00, and they will be looking at the underfunding of our homeless population. We have contacted our congressmen, our senators, and everyone is putting in a little bit of pressure on everybody to say that we are just underfunded for what we have. So this is a good thing, that when you have a civil grand jury looking into it, they're going to decide whether we're right, who's right on this, and maybe we can get some more money out of it. So it's a good thing. Second thing, the bike giveaway that we're doing, we're doing one at UAV on Saturday. If you have an opportunity to go to UAV on Saturday, and you can see the children, the sheriff's department participates with that, they actually give the bikes out to the kids. Our goal is to have the first or one of the first experiences that the kids have with the sheriff's department to be a positive one. So we want that to happen. We have 537 bikes. A hundred of them will be given out at University of Antelope Valley. bikes. A hundred of them will be given out at University of Antelope Valley. And Marco and Sondra Johnson do a wonderful job. They feed over 1,800 people with that. So it's, it's just a great thing. And I want to thank all the councilmen and councilwomen that we have. They put their own money into buying these bikes so that they, we could participate throughout the community. And when you can buy 537 bikes, it's a really an example. And it's not just for the city of Lancaster, but it's for the entire Antelope Valley. Some of these will be going to Little Rock. We're giving them to our ministerial association. They will be determining what families are really in need. So we're creating a valley for everybody and, you know, trying to make it a positive thing for everybody. So with that, I'd like to wish you happy holidays and Merry Christmas. We stand adjourned.